Do you order?
Uh, we do have a quorum. Uh, we have Richard Hodges from Blue Ridge College of Evangelism here to do our invocation. And would everybody please stand and act of invitation remain standing for the pledge.
Father, we thank you. You have given us this day that we may use for your glory. And Father, we, we come especially this week as just mindful of this holiday, this Thanksgiving season, and help us to always look inwardly and introspectively at our lives and, and to realize we have much to be thankful for. You've given us a free country. You've given us places to live. You've given us your creation to steward. And so I pray for those that are gathered in this meeting today. I pray that whatever decisions are made, I pray that they would be in accordance with your will, that in all things, that we would be thankful, that we would be mindful to, to work out a fair and a just society for all. So Father, we, we ask your blessings upon this time and again upon this season. In all things, we give you praise. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Again, welcome everyone this morning. We'll move right in on our agenda. We have citizens' time. We have Ms. Myers to sign up to speak on four subjects. Morning, Linda.
Morning, gentlemen. Um, this weekend I was out orange bagging. And I would like to have you guys send a directive to the school board to institute some kind of a indoctrination, starting in elementary school about trash. If we start young, maybe we can head it off at the pass because it seems to be growing. And there's no reason why, in addition to the pledge or whatever the kids are doing every day, they can't have some five minutes about trash and not littering. It's really, really important and it's, it's really out of control. Okay, number one. Uh, we do not pick up glass at the recycling centers. That was instituted maybe a year ago. Are we going to get back to picking up any glass? Or can we have one month or something so people can get rid of the glass that they've accumulated at transfer stations?
I don't know. Slow, you know, B and M, if, what happened to the glass recycling?
They said there just wasn't enough of it for them to have a separate bin and so on and so forth.
Actually, the glass itself, uh, we couldn't get rid of it. It ended up being taken to the transfer station and dumped anyways.
Yeah. So that's still not a possibility, you don't think?
Economy changes. It may become a possibility, but currently it's not.
Okay, all right. And the tires, are, are we going to do that again in the spring? I would assume it was very successful, the tire recycling.
We'll look at doing it once or twice a year, I think, until, you know, we don't get a need for collecting on tires.
Okay, if that happens. Um, about the new authority, it was posted in the newspaper that you guys are going to have a public hearing. Um, the structure info is not on the county website. I just spoke to Joe and he said that there is an Ag Expo website, but there's no link from one to the other as yet. And people would need to know, will it, is this volunteers, is employees, renumerations? Uh, these NGOs, they seem to have a mythical kind of growth. And we don't need to have executive directors and all kinds of extra people that are probably not going to be doing much. So, and if we're going to have a public hearing, people need to know the scope and all the in-betweens. And it should really be posted ahead of time, okay? We really need to do that. Um, and always if there is a way, and we should do it, to have links on the website. When you publish something in the newspaper, have a link that we can get, somebody can get the information with, without having to call poor Martha or Mr. Dalton or so on. Uh, if that information could be posted, uh, so people know. Yes? Oh, okay, all right. What can I say? Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Ms. Myers. Does anyone, anyone else would like to speak during citizens' time? Here and now, I'll close citizens' time. Okay, we have the minutes of the November 12th meeting. I entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion. Will you approve the minutes?
Have a second. Have a motion and a second to approve the November 12th minutes. Any corrections or changes? Here and now, I'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Hausman?
Aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Motion passes. Uh, payment of invoices. I entertain a motion to pay the invoices.
So moved.
Have a second. Have a motion and a second to pay the invoice, invoices. Is any invoice, any board member would like to discuss? Here and now, I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horni?
Aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Motion passes. Old business. Mr. Dalton, anything on our old business? Okay. Anything on our other? Okay. Moving to reports. Mr. Sam Cock, treasurer's report.
Morning, gentlemen.
Morning, Sam.
On our consolidated account report, currently we're at forty-five million, nine-hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand dollars. And our general fund balance is, first of the month, was twenty-six million, four-hundred-and-six thousand dollars. Our collections through Friday, we've taken in eight million, one-hundred-and-forty-five thousand dollars, about forty-three percent of our budget. It's starting to pick up. We did six-hundred-and-fifty-one thousand dollars yesterday in collections. And, uh, so I guess next week hopefully we'll get a lot of it in. And that's about all that. Anybody got any questions?
Anybody have any questions for Sam?
Due date's the seventh since the fifth is on the stack.
Seventh is the deadline on it, yeah. It is. All right, thank you.
Commissioner of Revenue, I don't see a fade this morning. Water Committee report.
Sorry, I hadn't got there. Uh, the Water Committee met on November the seventeenth, two thousand and fifteen and made the following recommendations. To approve the pretreatment permits for the following industries with the understanding that limits may be modified at any time. SVC manufacturing, PepsiCo, Blue Ridge Gatorade, Sonic America, Amco PET packaging.
Okay, we'll take one each at a time.
Or Amco, sorry.
Come from committee, doesn't need a second. Uh, any discussion? Here and now, I'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Hausman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Next item.
The second thing is to reverse the action taken on October the twenty-fifth, two thousand and fifteen, concerning the termination of the contract with Branson Construction and reinstate the contract per the new schedule with knowledge that the current contract is beyond the approved construction schedule.
Okay, come from committee, doesn't need a second. Any questions or discussions?
Didn't modify the bond in any way. Bond's still in place.
Yes.
Any other questions? Here and now, I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horni?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion passes. Anything else from the Water Committee?
Nothing that I know of.
Thank you, Mr. Horni.
We had a water leak geyser yesterday.
Oh, I didn't know about that.
Okay, let me get to the Budget Committee here.
Okay. Budget Committee had four, uh, items that they recommended to the full board. The first is to amend and appropriate thirty-seven thousand dollars from phone code one oh four to the courthouse department budget to cover cost of upgrading offices.
Okay, come from committee, doesn't need a second. Uh, any discussion or questions? Here and now, I'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Hausman?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Next item.
Uh, it's to move the following monies to the general fund. Um, and you can see there's school contingency, two hundred and eighteen thousand, five sixty-nine, fifty-four. PWR assessors, two oh three, uh, eight thirty, eight thirty-six, twenty-five. PWR office equipment of five forty-four, three oh nine, twenty-four. PWR environmental equality, one oh eight, one eighty-four, sixty-one. And PWR E nine one one, seven sixty-six, one ninety-four, uh, seventy-one, for a total of one million, eight-hundred-and-forty-one thousand, ninety-four dollars and thirty-five cents. That's just moving from some accounts that need to be closed out into the general fund monies. So it's just a transfer of funds, not an expense.
Okay, come from committee, doesn't need a second. Any other questions?
Now, that, that puts us above the limit that we have to keep in for the, for the school construction line. Not by much, but a little bit.
Yes. Any other questions? Here and now, I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horni? The chair votes aye. Next item.
Next item is to amend and appropriate seventeen hundred dollars from courthouse security fund one oh one to courtroom security, police supplies, three one zero two two dash four six zero one zero, to cover expected transport, lodging, and meals expenses.
Okay, come from committee, doesn't need a second. Any questions? Here and now, I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horni? Next up.
And the last item was to approve the holiday schedule for non-essential county administration employees. Um, you can see offices will close at noon tomorrow, be closed on Thanksgiving. And Friday, noon on the twenty-third of December, closed Thursday, Christmas Eve, and Friday, Christmas, and Thursday, December thirty-first, and closed on Friday, uh, New Year's Day.
Okay, come from committee, doesn't need a second. Any questions?
This just puts us in basically on the same schedule the courts on.
Yes. Any other questions? Here and now, I'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Hausman? And the chair votes aye. Motion passes. Next item on the General's Board Supervisor's report. Dr. Hausman?
Uh, the only thing, uh, I'd bring up, and I don't know if we've got any kind of notification on it or, or not, but, uh, didn't George With won the state golf tournament?
Yes.
So whatever we need to do to, uh, you know, for a resolution for any type of, uh, you know, state championship. That's, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
We'll get one right for the football team, too.
Well, you know, actually, one reason we brought the golf up is because, you know, if, if football does go on and, uh, uh, and win, you know, I'd like for, you know, golf not to get lost in the mix.
We gotta speak positively.
You don't want them to get, to get lost on tall grass, huh?
Okay, Wes Whiffle, Mr. Hall?
I don't have anything at this time, thank you.
East Whiffle?
Nothing.
Poor Chisel.
No, it's his time.
Black Lake? I mean, Black Lake, uh, Ben.
No, I don't have anything. I had a rugby issue and Mr. Berry will take care of it. Thank you.
Speak.
Uh, the only thing I had is I believe that Spiegel Fire Department was asked what they wanted to do with the S seventeen truck.
Oh.
And I can give you their opinion if, if you want that.
Well, the fire and rescue at our meeting, we discussed Stephanie was there.
Yeah.
Uh, they said they had a truck they'd like to sell. And we said that they needed to go back to the Spiegel Fire Department. Y'all vote on that and then send it to the board and then with your recommendations and then we would consider whatever you said.
Well, their, their suggestion is to sell it to Freeze if Freeze still needs that truck as an equipment truck. For the four thousand, I think Freeze offered him four thousand for it. That was what they voted on that night, so I just wanted to bring that.
So they voted to declare it surplus?
Yeah. Maybe it was those exact words, but that's basically what they did.
Is, and it's in our name, the county's?
It is in their name.
Do you want to?
One of the things we talked about was that we'd look and see what the real value. It's nice that you come and offer a price. But, uh, we didn't offer a price for the one in Blacksburg. We...
They offered it to us at a price, I understand.
Okay.
I know.
We understand that. I just wanted you to know that that was their vote to, to sell it as surplus and to sell it to Freeze if at all possible. If they still need it.
Based off that, I would ask the board to declare it surplus and we'll work up to the fire and rescue committee the real value of it and see if we can move forward with that.
Well, if that's appropriate, I'll make that motion.
Have a second.
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second to declare it surplus property. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Declare it surplus. Anything else, Mr. Horni?
Not that I can remember at this moment.
Uh, I did have a call on New Bethel Road, but the problem's been taken care of. Uh, I would remind all supervisors that December the fifteenth, uh, your disclosure forms need to be in to the county. So, and they're new forms. So, uh, you have to refill them out. They have to have at, uh, ethics council on the top of them. So they're all in the forms.
Do we do it paper and pencil or is it electronic this time?
It's still not paper and pencil.
You, some may email it.
Uh, ours is still kept at the county level.
Do, do we have the site that we can? Okay. And we can type it in? Okay.
It's, it's fillable. You fill it in.
Okay.
Anything else from the board? Here and now, County Administrator's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item is the Enterprise Zone expansion. Uh, we've, uh, have a public hearing scheduled for December the eighth. There's a map. In your package, magenta or pink is the proposed expansion area. That includes Caperion, uh, the area that, uh, two vacant lots, one that the tire company may be building on, a couple of industries over there, uh, Longwood and, uh, and out to North Forest Street, and that's about a hundred and eleven acres of an expansion. That public hearing will be on December the eighth. Now, once we have that public hearing and all the paperwork filled out, uh, we'll submit that to the state for approval. And, uh, hopefully that is a good positive, uh, commercial and economic development tool for those people.
There's a maximum number or maximum amount of acreage that we can have in?
Yes, sir. I think this still leaves us five hundred acres.
Okay.
That we can add if we have some of location up and down. We've got a lot of the interstate corridors and downtowns and all the existing industrial parks.
And, and the other question I have, um, just a little bit curious about, uh, yeah, with the, with the picture that we have, we've got the existing, which is green, and the proposed, which is, uh, is kind of a pink color. Why are there some that are not in it?
Uh, the one building, the white one, uh, in the middle there is AEP. The one's Ager Park. The next one is Mount Rogers Community Disability Board, which...
Okay. So there are really not, not anything that would benefit from, from that?
Yeah, you were, we've, we thought that we'd just be wasting acreage.
Uh, I, I agree. I just didn't, I didn't know what those buildings were, didn't, uh, you know, didn't quite understand that. What I do now?
It's a good question. It's just, uh, it is an odd-looking shape there. There's no action required. Public hearing to be on the eighth. That's, there's, uh, the next page is, uh, maybe, I don't think any, we've really ever seen this before. We met with the Port Authority representative. They've invited us down to visit the port sometime. Probably a, a good visit, uh, but here are some of their incentives and tax credits that you can use. Of course, Port Authority has the inland port up at the Winchester area. You can use some of these incentives for some of our industry out here. And, uh, the Port Authority has some projects themselves periodically that, uh, might be available for us out of here. So, information only, if you ever want to go to the port, uh, it's, uh, if you've not been to the Virginia port, it's, I would say, the premier port in the world. It can, if, sometime by the next summer or the year after, they'll be able to draft ships up to fifty-five feet deep. And, uh, which is, uh, even New York City can't do that, so it is, uh, done a lot of business, uh, currently. I think they said they had a twenty thousand or two hundred thousand containers of, uh, Christmas stuff sitting on the port when we met with them. Uh, the next item is the, uh, de-allocation of revenue sharing funds. We got this letter from Debbie Webb Howes, uh, her time period to make these projects go. As you come to the end, uh, one is Bertha Farms, another's Bear Walla, and then the realignment widening of, I believe that's Connors Valley Road. They've indicated to us that if those come back alive, we can reapply it in, at the next allocation process. And the last item is the V-Dax, uh, the Gypsy Moth program. You've got, should have some maps and areas, the problem areas, and, uh, and you will see the, uh, I guess you'd call it mating disruption, uh, fly, or they'll do this spring. But, uh, Gypsy Moss weren't quite as bad this year, at least down on my end and then around the farm as they had been in the past. So, uh, I think the program is working slowly at best.
Uh, you know, I'd say that With County's not included in, in the area. Is, will they be spraying here or is it just in areas that?
With County area is out in the Crawfish area, back towards that they'll actually be spraying. It's not actually spraying. They dispense these little pieces of, uh, pheromones that disrupt the mating of, uh, the male and female. So, uh, if you noticed last summer, periodically throughout the county, saw little green boxes hanging in trees, they, they sample and based off that collection data, that is the, the areas that they treat in.
Anything else, Mr. Dalton?
No, sir.
County attorney's reports. Mr. Farley?
I don't have anything reported this time.
Okay. Anything on our other, Mr. Dalton?
No, sir.
Uh, new business, consent counter. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent counter from November the twenty-fourth, two thousand and fifteen.
I'll make that motion.
Have a second. Have a motion and a second to approve the consent counter. Any questions? Discussion? Here and now, I'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Hausman? The chair votes aye. Mr. Dalton, Appalachian Power, one thirty-eight KV transmission line project.
As you can see from the filings, uh, American Electric Power, locally known as Abco, are moving forward with this project that is basically a, a upgrade of the substation in Progress Park. A new line that parallels the current line coming out of Progress Park out to, uh, I'm gonna call it the Crockett Farm or the Glen Lynn Line. And from that line, it would be completely rebuilt all the way across the mountain into Blaine into West Virginia. One of the things, uh, they've had their public hearings and had their comments, uh, there's very few areas that, that the line is in a new location, which is good. But they're going from a smaller right away to about double the right away to a hundred foot wide. Uh, one of the things I'd like to point out that in Ms. Barker's report that you looked at earlier today, that, uh, last year the improvements that was made on the, uh, AEP substation in Foster Falls and the line across, even in proration, brought in an additional three hundred thousand dollars of tax revenue to the county. And this improvement will bring over another hundred thousand dollars of tax revenue for next year. And it does, not so great here, but it does stabilize some of the power problems they're having over in Blaine County. And Blaine County gets a new substation out of this line.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? Here and now, Mount Rogers planned district commission audit.
Unless that, somebody has some questions, uh, that's their annual, appears that they're sound fiscally for another year.
Yep. Do we need to accept?
That would be good. Acknowledge that we've received it.
Okay. I entertain a motion to accept the Mount Rogers planned district commission audit.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any questions? Comments?
I, we went over, we had a Mount Rogers CSB, you know, meeting yesterday. We went over one of the, uh, one of the things that the, uh, uh, that the auditors said, and I don't know if it will affect us or not, but now, uh, daily, uh, daily meals, you know, reimbursement for meals will have to be counted as income. And, uh, so, un- unless it's an overnight situation. Uh, and so any, uh, any per diem that, that they get just, you know, on, on a daily basis, what Mount Rogers is doing is not reimbursing until the, uh, the end of the month, uh, at which time taxes will be taken out of, of what that was. Now, I'm assuming if, if they heard that, that we will hear that too.
We've already heard it.
Okay.
It'll be a comment that, how it came about in our, uh, discussion or was that sheriff has a lot of people at Bristol, at the academy, and we pay the meals. And, uh, that has to now, because that's a, a daily trip. That's really not out of town, that we've got to track that included as, pay for those people and take taxes out of them.
Well, I assumed when I heard that yesterday that, you know, we would hear it here.
Roughly, what's the taxes on the pack of nabs?
Well, we, we pay the taxes on the pack of nabs we buy, but, uh, at the academy, they get fed a little bit better than that, yeah.
Well, yeah. I can't wait till we have to declare it as a gift.
Yeah. Some of this stuff is kind of ridiculous. But anyway, any more, uh, comments or questions? Here and now, I'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Hausman?
And, Mr. Chairman, the only other thing I should have said just during my, uh, during my time, but I, uh, at the Mount Rogers meeting yesterday, they, they instituted this transportation, uh, thing. And I don't, you know, they, uh, you know, the people who run seem, you know, pleased with it. They've done, I don't know, I believe a meeting, like eight or ten transports. And I just, I, you know, maybe sometime we can check with the sheriff and see how... I, you know, maybe sometime we check with the sheriff and see how, you know, how that seems to go for them.
Because it was that the sheriff's department was having to transport them.
Yes, uh, yeah, because it was a TDO, or Temporary Detention Order, you know, the sheriff was having to, uh, to do it, so. What Mount Rogers is saying, it, it actually puts the person, and, and I can understand this in a better frame of mind, once they get to the, uh, mental health facility, because they're riding in a, either in a van or, or whatever, they're not riding in the back of a police car.
Anything else, uh, before we go into closed session?
No, sir, I, I would ask, when you go in closed session, to add, uh, legal matters, or consultation with legal counsel to that, uh, motion.
Okay, heard nothing else to come for the?
I'd like to get in a record that we don't have anybody present from the sheriff's department. Ask sheriff if he can fix that.
Okay, anything else? Here and now, I'll entertain a motion to go in closed session.
Uh, make a motion, we convene in a closed meeting, as permitted by Virginia Code two point two dash three seven one one A one, to discuss personal matter involving, uh, county administrator, and also, uh, entering a closed session as permitted by Virginia Code two point two dash three seven one one A seven, consultation with legal counsel.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are now in closed session.
As section two point two dash three seven one two of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the With County Board of Supervisors that such a meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the With County Board of Supervisors hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting, to which this certification resolution applies, and only such business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the With County Board of Supervisors.
Have a second on the resolution.
Say.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Do a roll call vote, Dr. Hausman.
Aye.
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 The chair votes aye. I entertain, any motions?
Uh, I, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we authorize, uh, Ch- Chairman Reeves to sign the amendment to employment agreement of Robert Solell Dalton, extending, um, his contract to December thirty-first, two thousand and sixteen.
Do I have a second on the motion?
Second. Ooh, sorry.
Any discussion or questions? Have a motion and a second, authorizing the chairman to sign the amended, uh, employment agreement with the county administrator. I'll do a roll call vote, Dr. Hausman.
Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. Mr. Dalton, is anything else to come forward to board at this time?
No, sir.
Uh, does any member have anything to come forward to board at this time? I would like to invite anyone, the Virginia Association of Counties, uh, steering committees, applications. If you'd like to serve on a steering committee, economic development, education, environmental and agriculture, finance, general government, health and human resources, uh, budget, conference planning, or nomination committee of, uh, Virginia Association of Counties, it's a good thing. I serve on the environmental and agriculture steering committee, and is Region Twelve's representative on the board of directors. Uh, Mr. Hale is, uh, is going to request to serve on either the Economic Development or Transportation Committee for VACO. And I invite any of the rest of board members to, to please consider serving on a VACO committee. With that being said, Mr. Dalton, anything else?
Uh, just to remind everybody, we're gonna be calling, uh, we have a new board member training next Wednesday and Thursday, maybe Friday. So, those that are on committees will probably get called to come in and talk a little bit about your committees.
Okay. Anything else? Here and now, I clarify, adjourned.